We'll see what happens here. Okay, so with that, moving on to item number two on the agenda is discuss and take action to approve a purchase and sale agreement for the parcel known as the Jansen property and to allow the first select one to sign the same. Can I get a motion?
Don't move.
Second, okay, great. All right. And just a real quick summary. And then we also have our attorney, Matt Matthew from Murta Kalina, who's going to be joining us, who's been working on this. But a quick summary is this is basically to purchase the property on Monver Town Road, which the school board is including in their school renewal plan. And this board discussed it back, and it was actually, I think, the end of May. And there were a number of items that we had reviewed that the board would want to see in this agreement. I think we've accomplished all that. And this property seller has agreed to all the terms in the agreement that you were sent around yesterday. I would just highlight the purchase price is $1.3 million. And the terms and conditions for completion of the transaction includes all municipal approvals, which would mean subject to successful completion of the referendum. And so we would not be required to purchase the property if, for some reason, the school renewal plan were taken to a vote, and the vote was not affirmative for the public. So we would not be obligated to buy the property. So those are kind of the key highlights, I think, that people were concerned about. And I know Dr. Cook was also going to try to join us as well as to see if there was any questions. But I think, as this board has talked about in the past, it's a you know, an important part of their plan. They thought there was a preferred path to go down in terms of buying this property because it saves quite a bit of money in the overall plan. Because originally, they talked about putting the new school, and it would actually go where some of the athletic fields now are at Poulsen, which are incredibly expensive to replace. Each field costs approximately a million dollars to replace. So this saves that cost. And it also makes it at least a more, at least lesser disruptive process for the school as they go through and stage the renewal plan. Because it allows them to just build the new elementary school on the new site, and it's least disruptive to the operations of the rest of the Green Hill campus. So I will, and is Dr. Cook available also, Lauren? I mean, with that, right now, I mean, we're talking about a, you know, if there's any questions for our attorney here, Matt Ray, I welcome them to Matt. And then also, sorry, I'm still getting these weird messages about my video. So I apologize. I'm going to have to be off video still. It's my video's not working, but.
Peggy, I'd like to ask Matt a question.
Okay.
Matt, I've learned to ask, are there any unusual deed restrictions on this property that we should be aware of?
You've done down this road before, have you? So we don't know yet. And the reason I say that is because we haven't, it would be premature to pull the title on this until we've gone and actually signed an agreement. I will add to Peggy, what Peggy already kind of outlined in terms of the town's ability to get out of the deal is not only is it conditioned on the municipal approvals, but we've also built in a kind of a very overbroad 120-day due diligence period where we could, where the town can get out from under the P and S agreement if the wind blows the wrong way. So I mean, literally, it says that the town can terminate the agreement within 120 days from the date of signing. So it would be during that four-month period where, you know, the boards, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, you would be dual-tracking the necessary municipal referendums in town meeting. But we would also be doing environmental reviews, which I believe Bill McGinn has already done some of those. But we would also order the title, get a title commitment. And that's, at that time, that's when we would scrub the title to the property during that 120-day period. So if something did come up that we didn't like, or if there was something that the sellers didn't make aware to us that we came, became known of, we would, you know, if the town wanted to, we could get out of the agreement at any time during that 120-day period.
Matt, when does the 120-day period start?
So it starts on the later of the effective date of the purchase and sale agreement, or the date where the seller delivers some of their due diligence items. So that's always somewhat of a squishy date. It depends on, I'll work with the seller's attorney to find out how much they actually have in their possession. Given that it's vacant land, they're not, you know, for the majority of the local sellers aren't local, and they probably, they really haven't done much on the land. They may not have a lot in terms of title documents and surveys and some of those plans. So it may be that we rely on the effective date of the P and S, and that's when it's signed by all parties, or the latest date to be signed.
Are we confident that, working backwards from all of the notices that we have to provide for the referendum, that we can safely have the diligence done and know prior to all of that?
Yes. So environmental has already been, you know, we have not, you have not engaged us to take a look at the environmental because it was premature to incur those legal fees. But I know the town officials have already started to look at some of the soil tests, environmental studies done on the, on the actual property. It was, we're comfortable with the findings there. We would, once the agreement is signed, at that point, order, order a title review. And certainly, 120 days is plenty, more than enough time to review the title, raise any sort of questions that we may have with sellers attorneys, and decide whether, from a town perspective, whether we're comfortable or not with those title matters. I think the only outside date to be aware of, and Peggy, I believe you touched on this initially, is April 15, 2022, is kind of the deadline date for the town to have obtained its town meeting or approval of the residents for the actual purchase. If we were to get to April 15, and those approvals had not been completed or obtained yet, the sellers do have the right to terminate the P and S agreement and walk away as of April 16, if the town still has not received those approvals. Now, that is what the letter of the agreement says. In the pragmatic and practical world, if we were to get to April 1, and there were four big snowstorms during the month of March, and you weren't able to hold the town meeting as, you know, originally planned, or we were pushing up against that April 15 date, and you needed another week or two, seller would extend. I mean, the seller's already, attorney has already said, hey, these, these deadlines are often extended in a commercial real estate transaction. But I do want everybody to keep in mind that April 15, 2022 date to have municipal approval on the referendum or the town meeting articles.
Yeah, and I think the timeline that the board is working towards, and what we've spoken about was, we had originally talked about a possible December or February timeline. The school board is focusing on the February timeline for a referendum. And that's something that we're going to talk about at Monday's Board of Selectmen meeting, laying out a little bit more detail about the different approval processes and everything that we would need to go towards that February referendum date. So we were actually putting in a cushion there. I just didn't want to leave it. It was more the February snowstorms. I know that, for some reason, we always have big snowstorms in February, and I was a little worried about, you know, or there can be some delays in January with town meeting, because ultimately, we do town meeting, and then we go to referendum. So, you know, there's, there's some wiggle room here to account for all that before we have to deal with going back to the sellers to, you know, grant and get any kinds of extensions. We've got some, you know, cushion in terms of the timeline.
And then similarly, we've identified the path and the timing for all of the other approvals that this is going to need from inland wetlands, or from zoning, or whatever other regulatory group needs to, needs to weigh in on this?
Yeah, that, that's part of the timeline that we'll talk about on, on Monday night. You know, that what we, what we have to go through in terms of process and all that.
And Dr. Cook, can you just clarify? I think you've said this before, but for the purposes of this meeting, the purchase price of the property is included in the the total numbers that you'll be talking about, right, as you go public with everything?
At this point, it is not. It's, it's been removed from the purchase price that we were looking at for the project.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at how we want to finance this. And I've had conversations with the Board of Finance Chair, as well as the Board of Education Chair, because of just the nature of the timing of this. It may make more sense that we actually pay for this out of either special appropriation, or with the proceeds from oil and prep. Why, why finance something at 4% over 20 years versus when we could pay cash for this? That's only earning, you know, half a percent. So that's going to be a discussion for the different boards. The timeline in the contract, though, gives us ultimate flexibility of whatever path we choose in terms of financing it.
Yeah, so how we pay for it is, is a separate discussion. But that, it is part of the bigger plan, I think, is important, that, that we're presenting the public with the, the sum total of, of the proposal.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're going to see, though, is, when they come forward with the cost proposal, there's also savings associated with the not having to move the fields and everything from some of the things that had been discussed and previously about the renewal plan. So.
Well, right, so I appreciate that there are put-and-takes in this strategy. The, but what I wouldn't want us to do is to say, on the one hand, here's the school project, and then, on the other hand, here's the town buying land. And we are not putting them together for, for a sum total. It's, they all, they all need to be on the same piece of paper for, as far as planning goes and decision-making goes.
Well, that, yeah, that's part of just walking through the whole school plan. But in terms of what people vote on at the voting booth, it's, they're voting for a bonding package. They're not, they're not voting on a total cost package. They're voting on a bonding package. So there's two separate components of that. One is, what is that bonding going to be used for? And that's to build new schools and do the school renewal plan. But then, you know, so I guess, in terms of public communication about the project, of course, we're going to, we've always been transparent that the fact that they're going to be purchasing the property. But in terms of what's actually going to go on the ballot, it's going to be what we're being authorized to bond for. And that's the discussion that still has to be had with the Board of Finance.
Okay, so.
Can I just ask a question real quick?
Sure.
So, Dr. Cook, maybe you can just add some color. And Lauren, maybe you could bring Galen in, who's the Board of Ed Chair. But I know that, you know, A, I'm excited about this property. I think it adds, you know, a lot of opportunity for our town in a variety of different ways from a school plan standpoint. And I know that the Board of Ed was super supportive of this. So maybe you could just, you know, provide us a little color commentary with, you know, how this sort of fits in with the, the overall facility plan.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, what I would say is it would be included as part of the presentation of the project, but there are other costs in there that also, I think, are forward-thinking. It wouldn't normally maybe be part of just the school program being such as money to level Ryerson School, you know, so that's not always typical. When you do a building project, that might be something normally you would just turn the keys over to the town. So I think that that collaboration that's been going on through this process had us, did include that money in there. In terms of the, the land, I think, for many of the reasons that Peggy Lyons laid out, that's, that's why it was the board's preferred site for the, the project. It was unanimous when the board discussed it several times, that this would be the place for the reason being, the fields would not be interrupted for, for several years. The cost was less than the cost of moving the, the two fields. The two fields were set to move to Jeffrey, which I think, long-term, is a better community asset than, than Ryerson. I think we all felt that in terms of whether that was held by the, by the board, or returned to the town, or a collaborative effort on that, that we felt that that was a better asset for us in that, that property. And then finally, I mean, there's a lot, there's many other reasons, but also traffic, as, as you all know, you know, Green Hill Campus is plagued with lots of traffic issues. And this would certainly bring families to that area, but probably more in line of what Jeffrey is now, and not add to the, you know, the issues that Poulsen in hand.
Thanks. You're hugely helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know, just, just to be to the point, we are proposing to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the property owners with the contingency that the school project is approved, correct?
Yes, that is true.
Yes.
Right. In other words, we would not complete the sale, or we would not complete the purchase of the property if that, if that proposal does not pass referendum.
Correct. I mean, that, that's the current plan that is in process. And this will continue to go through approvals, because we'll be voting on, when we send it to referendum, the approval of the purchase at town meeting would be subject to the referendum as well. So.
Okay. And Matt, the language in the purchase and sale agreement reflects that?
It does, yeah. The, the town's obligation to purchase is contingent upon it, the town receiving all required municipal approvals, namely, approval of the bonding, or the financing arrangement. However, the town agrees to go after that, or, or structure the financing, as well as, as I mentioned, 120-day for, you know, if, if within the next four months, something comes up and the town makes the, the decision that it just doesn't want to go down this route, for any reason whatsoever, you know, you could also terminate the agreement.
But that just gives the town the right to withdraw from the, so, so even if it, if it didn't pass that referendum, the town could still purchase it?
Yes, oh, sure. Yeah. So if you, if the town made the election that it just wanted to, let's contemplate this. Let's say the, the financing referendum did not pass, but the town saw value in this property and decided to purchase it, and landbaked the property for future development in the next two to three years, because it's a good value now. Yeah, there's, there's nothing stopping the town from going down that route either.
I mean, you would still have to go through Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, because you'd have to find the funds to do it. So.
But sure, yeah.
Yeah. All, all this is doing is committing us to the purchase and sale agreement.
I'm excited about this property. I think we, as a town, and perhaps our predecessor boards, learned a lesson about trying to put too much school on too little acreage. And I think, I think this makes a whole lot of sense. I would not want to see us go down that path again.
Any other questions for Matt, or for Dr. Cook, or Galen?
I guess, Galen, any, any further comments from the Board of Ed's standpoint relative to, I mean, that just obviously passed unanimously. So we're pretty excited about that. But any thoughts that you could add to the conversation?
No, I think you've about covered it. I mean, I think in terms of space acreage opportunity, preserving the existing fields, doing, doing it right the first time with the building makes the, the Jansen property the right for us to put the new school.
Thanks.
Okay. Great. Well, with that, I guess we'll go for a vote. All in favor of the motion as read to approve a purchase and sale agreement with the parcel known as Jansen Property, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you. So before we go on to the next point, I'm going to totally shut down and then log back on. So, and then that'll give Lauren a few minutes to move other people over. And hopefully, that'll solve my camera thing. So I'll do a total reboot this time versus just Zoom reboot. So I'll be back in a minute. Thank you.
We need some vamping music or something. Right?
You're the music.
I'd love to hear a drum solo about now.
I'm in the basement. Drums are upstairs.
Drums are always.
Actually, Christina can sing. We'll have Christina sing. Come on, Christina, hum us a few bars.
We have a whole band here.
I'd like to see a duet with Christina and Jack. How about that?
What is he saying?
I'm clear, I'm sure he probably does. Jack's talented and everything.
They help you.
God says we have to do a duet.
Getting a whole crew on here. This is good stuff.
Hey, one of the front row, you got it.
That's right, huh?
Just need Ian Rumberger, who's.
I saw her in there. Yep.
Got it.
There she is.
Maryetta.
Did you get everybody?
I don't see Ian on, on my screen yet.
She's here. I see her.
Is she there?
Yep.
Might be on page two of your screen.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, sorry. I've got a small screen, I guess.
For folks that are watching, we're just waiting on Peggy's reboot, little video issue. So we're moving people over. And we will begin momentarily as soon as our first select woman rejoins us. The joys of Zoom. Well, she is. And video. Nice. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Once again, I have no idea what's going on with this, but I will figure it out. Okay, so many apologies for people for the delay. But so I guess, moving on to the second item, agenda is discussed with the Board of Police Commissioners, police matters relating to public safety, including vehicle thefts and traffic concerns. So I want to welcome to the members of the Police Commission tonight. And I appreciate you joining us for tonight's discussion, as well as members of the Madison Police Department. I think, as many of you know, there's been a lot of conversations and, and issues of concern going on the community lately about the kind of rash of car break-ins in our neighborhoods. And I know the public has reached out directly both to my office, as well as more frequently to Chief Drum and MPD, as well as Ed Dowling, Chair of the Police Commission. And, and that they've had a number of conversations about this, to talk about ways to make improvements, and provide assistance, and, and make people feel safe, that the town is taking action to, you know, to try to mitigate the situation. And I thought it would be helpful and important that our board just be here as part of that conversation, to know we're all working together on this, and that we're also here to provide assistance when it makes sense for us to provide assistance. Clearly, this is a, a police matter that's their areas of expertise. And they've been doing a really good job, I think, trying to think of ways to provide comfort to residents that we're taking initiatives, but also to show support from the Board of Selectmen level, that we want to be here for you. And if there are resources or things, ways we can help you, you know, I think it's important that we're part of this dialogue. So, so with that, I think I'll turn it over to Ed Dowling, who's the Chair of the Police Commissioner. And I know Ed and Chief Drum have some things to talk through, and then I think we could open it up for a broader conversation amongst all the board members.
Great. Thank you. One, we appreciate the opportunity to elevate and broaden this discussion. We realize and recognize that the concerns that have been expressed by Madison residents regarding thefts, street related issues, speeding, and other related matters. These discussions, as Peggy referenced, you know, have been key stimulants at the Police Commission's summer meetings beginning in June. Where for certainly several of the meetings, we've had record attendance and have had what we believe is some excellent dialogue and engagement with residents, certainly better understanding their concerns, and hopefully trying to share some of the things that we're, as a, as a police commission, the Police Department are doing. We also recognize that people want to feel safe in their homes. They want to feel safe on the streets in Madison. They want security regarding their property. And that is a desire that, you know, came across loud and clear, and is absolutely, on our part, reasonable and expected people to have. We also, as we discussed with the Police Commission, and with the Police Department, with the Chief Drum and the other leadership, we also recognize that the Madison Police Department, nor any police department, cannot totally prevent the action on the part of some individuals who either come into the community or are within the community to have certain actions which are endangering our residents and their, and their fellow residents. We see this, and the Chief will get into some of this. We see this trend that is hitting certainly areas like Madison and other shoreline communities, specifically, and certainly with more frequency. We have worked, and the Chief will get into it. Within the Police Commission, we are actively engaged in evaluating our current level of resources, and putting together certain budget proposal requests that will deal with both operating expenses and also capital investments that we believe will allow us to meet core expectations on the part of our citizens. And we'll be developing those, that, both those budget requests initially within the Police Commission. And then, as we move into the budget season, obviously sharing them with the Board of Finance and the Board of Select. So we just, as I said, wanted to provide that overview. And as the Chief and the members of the Commission, I talked about the importance of this, these topics. We thought it might be helpful for the Chief to walk us through kind of four key areas. One is to deal with the issues of car thefts and home burglaries. Two, deal with issues that, that certainly increased during the summer, and that is speeding and the safety people feel when they're walking, or with, you know, biking on the streets. Three, deal with traffic safety issues. Residents come to us with, in many cases, very reasonable, responsible requests. And we need to engage with the town engineering to respond to that, whether it's signage or, or other adjustments to make with the street. And that's an area where we think we need to focus more and become more nimble in terms of responding to issues. And then lastly, just touch upon the groundwork that, that we are starting to evaluate in looking at budget requests going forward. So, you know, obviously, the, the Chief is the, the Chief Executive of the Police Department is, is certainly conversed with these issues. And Chief, let me turn it over to you to, to take us through the items as, as I've outlined.
Thank you. Good evening. Everybody. But before we start, Peggy, are we going to ask for comments upfront from folks? Thank you. Good evening, everybody. But before we start, Peggy, are we going to ask for comments upfront from folks?
Public comments scheduled at the end of the meeting.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Jack Drum. I'm the Chief of Police for the Town of Madison. Joining me tonight are also Captain Joseph Race, Captain Doug Harkins, and Lieutenant Neil Mulher. Some of you folks have been with us at our Police Commission meetings we've had previously in regards to most certainly car thefts, home burglaries, to some quality of life issues such as speeding, stop signs, and various neighborhoods. In regards to car thefts, home burglaries, majority of the car thefts we had in the Town of Madison had to do with folks leaving key fobs or the keys in the car. A majority, more than 90% of the cars that were stolen or taken. Indeed, that's what they had, and the majority were also recovered. We've started a campaign, and maybe Neil could talk to it a little bit later. I know, Neil, you met with some of the neighborhood, as well as Captain Harkins. But I mean, we need people to also help us. I have a limited source of resources that I use in the town. We cover approximately 130 some odd miles of road every evening. We do that with sometimes three to five people on the road. Absent any incidents that were called to, which require more than one officer, we hope to make as many passes as we can through the neighborhoods. That being said, we still need your help. That means to deter people from doing things. Those that come in this town bent on stealing or taking your vehicle or entering your home. We have never had, you haven't had a home invasion as long as I've been here, last 11, 12 years. I know that came up at some discussion with emails to me from various people in the neighborhood. And that's based on what they've seen in other communities. One, make it very clear what's happening in Madison is happening across the state, probably beyond the borders of Connecticut. We know that just by what we see in the media. I mean, unfortunately, last night in the Town of Essex, they had a stabbing, but off one of the ramps with two individuals. I'm not quite sure what the phenomenon is. I hear about a half dozen reasons explaining why crime is coming and increasing in the neighborhoods of rural and the residential side of Connecticut, but it's happening. And to blame it on COVID, to blame it on juvenile justice, we could find probably half a dozen other reasons for this, but we're dealing with the fact. The fact is, people live in the cities, all different cities, not only just in Connecticut, but we've recovered a few of our cars outside of Amsterdam, New York, right outside the city. We need to, we need the communities to assist us. We need them folks to work and not keep their cars as a vulnerable target or their homes. You need to lock your doors. I know that I hear from some people that say, hey, Chief, we live in Madison, you know, this is a pretty easy place. And I can't leave our doors unlocked. You know, we leave them unlocked for the kids when they go home from school, or, you know, why can't my car be, my property be safe in my own driveway? I would say years ago, we probably could have done that, but now it's a different, different thing. It's things that are happening that we haven't seen before. So we need your help. Then, one, don't keep the keys in the car, the fobs, lock your doors, and be vigilant. A lot of people have cameras. A lot of neighbors are connected through some of the camera systems. Also help us be the eyes and ears for us. I'm going to have Neil or Doug talk a little bit more to some of the programs we've done within the neighborhoods of recent. We'll start with you, Neil.
Am I out? You hear me?
Yep.
So you recall a couple of months back at a Police Commission meeting, members of Seaview, the Neptune area, all came in and they wanted to help. So we had a meeting, we came up with some ideas, and unfortunately, it was right after the town reinstated the COVID mandate. So a lot of it's been done by email. We're staying in touch. We have one spokeswoman for the groups. And basically, we've realized that, you know, like I've said at previous meetings, as well as the Chief and other members of the Command Staff is, these happen because of us, not because of the police, because of us as residents. I'm a resident. They took my wife's purse out of her car, believe it or not, but it's because of our behavior. So one of the things we wanted to focus on, number one, not dealing with staffing or a police response, was to find a way to get people to actively change their behaviors to prevent this. Because it's all about targeting, target hardening. If we harden our neighborhoods, you will not become a target anymore. So we came up with several things that, and you might have seen on Liberty and down by the Country Club. We're using the town's electronic billboards as reminders for people to lock their vehicles. We're also going to be putting some flyers and what are to the affected areas. And it's not just down by the shoreline. It happens in the area of Rolling Meadow. It's happened all the way up to Jasper Lane, which is, you know, the last town, the last road in the town. So when our guys are patrolling, they're actually going to stuff flyers as the thing. But there's some other plans we're working on. We're in the infancy stages and, but the feedback has been great. You know, people have to realize we can't be in one specific neighborhood for a nine hour period on a midnight shift. We have an entire town that has to be covered.
Thank you, Neil. Captain Harkins? Would you please speak to your involvement with the Neighborhood Watch?
Sure, so.
Can you hear me?
Okay, so in addition to the electronic signs downtown, I've also instructed our Patrol Division to institute patrol checks from 3:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the morning, every hour on the hour, south of Route 1. The officer's job at that point is to go and look for any suspicious activity or any suspicious vehicles. The only reason that they wouldn't be conducting that patrol check is if something serious was going on elsewhere in town and they couldn't conduct the patrol check. But that's what we're doing. So during the time where in the past where cars have been broken into or stolen, between the 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM time period, we're going to have an officer within that area. So that's going to run from probably Liberty and Webster Point all the way down to Surf Club. So somewhere in there would be a random check, but it'll be patrol check looking for suspicious activity. Let's see. And also, I mean, I'm sure that the Chief touched on this, is, you know, we have another, as far as staffing and resources, we have another officer that just entered the Police Academy, so we're working on that, and then bolstering our ranks. That's pretty much it. Between working with the associations and our signs and our patrol checks down there, we're really trying to step up, you know, our presence.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. I know folks that probably want to ask questions, but I just wanted to get through. We spoke a little bit about hiring police officers. Currently, the Madison Police Department has approximately 27 officers. We have three that have retired. One is out on extended injury leave from a high-impact collision. We currently have one officer entering the academy. She is presently there now with two more to follow. It's not easy to hire police officers in the state of Connecticut. It is not just the community of Madison. It is across the board, including Connecticut State Police. There are many candidates, and I could sit there and say, well, some of them may have to do with the demonization of the policing profession, probably over the last two, three years. It's hard to get folks that used to be interested in the profession from participating. We've seen from upwards of 400, 500 people taking an exam down to 18 in some scenarios, given exams given through different post-council affiliates. We're working on it. We're right now in backgrounds with other officer candidates, and we're going to bring those numbers back up. But right now, we have to work with the tools that we have, and that is 26, including this command structure, which, by the way, we're out on the road also. I'd like to go from there to, I'll call it, neighborhood issues, traffic enforcement, speeding. And we've had a lot of folks over the summer call in about speeding and traffic concerns. Matter of fact, South Route 1 was up 45% this past summer in calls for service for various quality of life or, in their opinion, things that needed to be addressed by the Police Department. We've done our best with that with the tools that we have. We put some additional signs in in some of the neighborhoods. Some of you have seen them. The neighbors that live there, they're excited and happy. Those that don't live there really don't care for them. It's rather interesting. We've also added a couple of speed signs recently on Route 1. It actually has had a pretty good effect on slowing down traffic, better than I thought. It takes time to get these into position. It takes time to obtain the product. COVID has slowed it down also, our ability to get materials, particularly the speed signs. I guess to talk to Traffic Safety and Management, I'm going to ask Tom Carwood, Commissioner Carwood, to speak a little bit to how we run our traffic log.
Okay, what we have, everybody hear me all right? Good. What we have initiated a number of years ago is a traffic log. And in that log, we take on a regular basis any comments, observations, letters, notes, emails that are sent in by any of the residents of Madison about any concern that comes up for that particular person. Upon receipt of this, it's entered into a traffic log, which is reviewed once a month at the Board of Commissioners meetings, and we try and keep that open and complete. There are some of the columns marked pending. Fortunately, lately, with a lot of work on everybody's part, we've had more of the columns marked closed. One additional thing in relation to the traffic log is this has been my responsibility for a number of years on the Commission. And I'd like to think that on a regular basis, when a letter comes in to any of the Commissioners or to the Chief or to the Town Office, it's forwarded, a copy is forwarded to me, and I have made it a point to reach out to the resident, talk to them about what's going on. And in many cases, they say, thank you very much. We didn't expect a call the same day or the next day. We appreciate that, and we look forward to some resolution of the problem. Now, resolution of the problem is a separate issue. In many cases where residents are asking on their street for reduction in speed, what the Chief and the Town Engineer have to take into consideration is how is this going to affect the traffic on a regular daily basis? Speed bumps, whereas they are effective in certain areas, do not work on major roads. They're deterrent for fire and emergency vehicles. They slow them down. That's one option. Reduction of speed from what people would say is 35, 20, down to maybe 20 miles an hour. It's hard sometimes on these well-traveled roads to drive 20 miles an hour without having a stack of cars behind you. And from experience, we've seen that if someone is actually adhering to the speed limit, more often than not, on one of the smaller town roads, they'll be passed by one or two or three cars on a double yellow line, which creates another significant problem. So the summation is that every request is taken in, every request is logged, and every request to the best of our ability, using the intelligence and and the history the Chief and the Engineers have and all the officers, in coming up with a solution that makes the most sense. Unfortunately, it does not always make the most sense for the person who has initiated the complaint. And we hope that there is a degree of understanding as to how the process works and what we're trying to fix.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. I just want to add to that, you know, I'm not going to talk to the numbers that are actually active on patrol, because I really don't want to give out, I know this is a recording, it's going to go out on YouTube, and I don't want to give anyone a hand up on committing crime in this town. Just as example, how we start our day. Our midnight shift with the overlap of the day shift are on the bus routes that go to all the schools. I have to tell you that we get complaints all the time in the bus routes. And if you live there and you're watching this, you know exactly what I'm talking about. We have multiple requests, more than we have police officers that cover the assignment. But we rotate those around town at various times. Route 79 going north, north of the circle, I mean, it's not unusual to have cars clock 80 plus on that road. In the last year and a half, we've had three major accidents, including a fatal. So we have a lot of area to handle in this town. We try to work it around so that we can cover the areas that need it most. We still can't figure out the regular citizens of this town and the routine patrols in their neighborhoods. I just want to make that point to folks, that they understand that we have to cover a lot of roadway in this town. It's a large town. It goes 16, 18 miles north. And we're using the resources that we have. Before I go into the groundwork for budget requests, somebody had a question, I think.
Jack, I'd like to make one comment in relation to what you just said. At our Board of Commission meetings, which is held once a month, we have a presentation from the Chief and his department as to how many traffic tickets, issues, or warnings that are handed out to the public in Madison every month. And what we see, there are two primary causes for this. One is excessive speed, and the other is following too close. And as diligent as the Police Department is, as committed as they are, we can't stop you from driving too fast, and we can't stop you from driving too close. And we have asked you on a regular basis at all of our meetings, please respect the road, and please understand what your responsibility is as a driver.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. And just a snapshot for those that are signed on, maybe first time, they're engaging with the Police Commission or with the Police Department. We average 25 to sometimes 50 calls for service any day, most certainly on weekends. And most certainly, we're the R1 with the ambulance. We respond to all medical calls with D-Fib and oxygen. On average, with, if you were to do the math, we're quite busy during the day. I don't have extra officers to do the extra assignments. Maybe some point down the road we will. But this is the service that the town has elected, that the taxpayers have passed a referendum to give me the money, to give me the tools to do the job we have to do. And I'm not saying that additional officers are going to make your life easier as far as with reducing crimes like auto theft, things like that. I mean, I said this in a meeting in July in the Police Commission. After the fireworks, I have two cars pulled over off of Seaview Avenue, not two blocks away. They're stealing the car at the same time. There's a police car with the strobes going. Very bold people. What I want to add to this also is that we have a lot of crimes that occur in this town. We have the senior population. I think a lot of people don't really understand. What exceeds our car thefts is frauds against senior citizens in this town. We have an awful lot of that. We also have a lot of theft, larceny from businesses. We have interpersonal with families. We have a lot of family issues that have occurred since COVID. The effects of COVID most certainly have affected us virally, but also psychologically. Our involuntary committals have increased. Our need for psychiatric care and services back to the community have increased tremendously. So that's what's going on right now. A little, just give a little snapshot of what we're doing within the Police Department. We also have with us is that the mandates that came out of the Police Accountability and Transparency Act. Quite frankly, next year, we're going to have to have two folks on staff as psychologists/social workers. That's good. That's the law. And it's an unfunded mandate. We're going to have to hire these folks or somehow find a program that we could use, perhaps I'm advocating for, is an internship paid within the university settings with overall management from this department and from the university. That's a tall order to fill, but we're going to be required to do that among other requirements, not funded by the state that they put upon the community. So that's going to require people and others interested in helping getting us that funding and getting it done. One, the most, we have to comply with the law. We're not going to have a choice. We can't say, hey, we'll opt out. We're Madison. No, you have to comply with the law. Groundwork for budget requests. Should I keep going, Peggy?
Sure.
Keep going.
Go ahead.
I'm doing all right?
Our ears are open.
Listen, the budget of the Police Department is predicated on need. It's not really on wish. If I have something that I would like to get that's a wish, I make it very clear to both the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, and most certainly my Police Commission, which runs the books for me. I answer to them, and then from there, we make presentations to the various committees that go through the budget process, which starts very shortly and continues into the spring. It has to referendum and is voted on by you folks that are attending this meeting and others. It's nice to say I like to have this amount or that amount of police officers. Listen, I love to have additional officers to be used on a an ongoing five-day-a-week traffic unit, where they're out there enforcing motor vehicle laws and they're rotating around the agency. The correction around the town for the agency. I would like to have more community active programs, but I don't have the personnel for that. I have to leave, put them on the road. We're very fortunate that we do have two folks in the school system as SROs, but that is paid for 70% by the Board of Ed back to the town. Ultimately, it's paid by the taxpayers of the Town of Madison. We have a lot of challenges to put on us that we're not really paid for. We have I-95 that goes through this town. We have ramps that dump, that end up exiting, it's all throughout the town. Most average, in a 24-hour period of time, it's seven to 8,000 cars. Exceeds that in the summertime. 26,000 people on average attend Hammond ass the State Park. I don't know how many cars exactly that is, but it's more than 6,000, 8,000 come down the Hammond ass the connector. A lot of folks that come down that connector, and they go into the Town of Clinton or others. From a business sense, we like people to come to the town. We have beaches. We're attractive to them. There's a surge in the summer. We're able to put the two SROs back on the road, which assists us with this. That's part of the program that we have agreed to with the Board of Ed. Ultimately, what I said about nine years ago was I'd like to have ultimately 32 officers. We did all kinds of needs assessment. We compared, did comparative analysis in some of our neighboring communities. There's 27, there's 26 in the Town of Clinton. We compared, did comparative analysis in some of our neighboring communities. There's twenty-seven and there's twenty-six in the town of Clinton. There's thirty-eight in the town of uh, Guilford. I'm not sure what the magic number is. I know that we need more support, more help so I can give back more services to the town. As I said earlier, we're going to be required to because of the Police Accountability Transparency. Uh, right now we do have a robust unit. Those investigations, if you were a victim of a crime and we solved it for you, it most appreciated. You'll understand more than. Uh, the most. We work very hard. I'm very fortunate. That I have worked with great people within this agency. We have a lot of folks that are dedicated and most certainly doing more with less. Uh, our agency gives up a lot of their holiday time, particularly during the summer, so it's all hands on deck. To make the summer spectacular for all the people that live here, that, that being the Fourth of July Fest and some of the other programs. Have you seen us at different events? Uh, we're looking forward to the trunketry in the fall. It's been a signature of this town since that first storm we had back in two thousand and ten. So. When you folks think about this and you think about uh, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? I'm asking the whole town. I'm asking the town as a whole. I'm asking eighteen thousand, some odd people. I don't know how many voters, voters there are. That they agree to the concept of what we want to apply to make Madison secure and great. And the police department continued giving that uh, benchmark of service that we do. We're dual accredited CLEA agency. Don't take that lightly. We're the only one in the state of Connecticut, one of thirty-two in the nation, the only one in New England. That's, that's basically his best practices that we practice every single day in this agency. Do we have our shortcomings at times? Of course we do, but we learn how to correct them and move on and learn from it. And I'm going to stop there unless somebody else would like to answer another question.
Um, well, I think, uh, why don't we, we could open up to questions. I just want to uh, echo, you know, that we have a, a very professional police force. They do an excellent job in the community and I think, um, particularly Jack, I, I was on the Board of Finance when you came to Madison. Um, and you talked about the vision of what the department can be. You've done a great job leading us to where we are today. Uh, I was on the police commission for three years, so I get all the complaints, the traffic issues, the struggles that you have, and also just the. Um, implementation hurdles that you have to go through sometimes. You want to do something, but then you realize you got to go through, either it's our own public works department or go through the DOT. Uh, so a lot of things that you want to do in terms of traffic control and all that. You know, there are other agencies that you have, are kind of dependent on at times to make things happen. Um, so I just want to, uh, you know, commend. Um, all the officers on this call and the entire MPD at, at doing a great job and serving our community. So. But we're always looking for ways to improve and part of the uh, thought process that has been going on the last couple of months is how, how can we do better to. Try to address community concerns. So. With that, I just want to turn it over to any comments by board members or questions by board members or, or comments by the police commission members.
Oh, quick, quick question. Um. And Jack, you sort of, you sort of touched on it, but I guess first. Congratulations on the dual accreditation of CLEA. I think that is. Incredible and our police department should be. Beyond proud, our community should be beyond proud of our, of our police department. So. Thank you for doing that. Um. You know. You, you sort of touched on the, the staffing, um, and I, I'm just curious. You know, if you were to have your druthers of the ultimate staffing. Um, what might that look like? Are we staffed at the right levels? Um, in, in Madison. Um, can you, can you comment on that?
Yep, certainly. Um, I remember I spoke to, I, I felt based on the first assessment, the second one that followed up within four years. That somewhere around the number of thirty-two officers was appropriate. With the SROs inclusive for the town of Madison. I think that and some of the changes that we've seen happen over the last five to eight years. Some of the spikes in crime, some of the spikes in high, uh, high. Activity, high uh, impact accidents. I think I'd rather, uh, uh, I would like to ask perhaps maybe uh, one additional, maybe even two. Uh, over replacing the officers that are currently um, vacant those slots. Um, what would I do with them? I would, I, I talk about that dedicated uh. Unit for traffic. Which a lot of towns have, but they also have, you know, Branford has a traffic unit, but Branford has over fifty officers. During twenty-six thousand population, but they have quite a metropolis they're growing. A lot, it's, it's very busy business-wise. Um, Guilford uh, has thirty-eight. They, they're only about. I think two thousand more people and probably uh, maybe four, four more square miles. I'm not sure what it is, but they also have a very, very vibrant and active route one corridor. Including Walmart and the very shopping centers. So they get a lot of impact crimes that occur because of that. If you were looking at Clinton, Clinton very similar. The mall alone, the, the outlets keeps uh, the town of Clinton churning all the time at larcenies and other crimes that stem from that. Today they had one with, it was a, it's. It was a break uh, and uh, theft from the stores that went bad, ended up at a gas station, ended up in a pursuit uh. With a, a dog's being called in or they check, they abandoned the stolen car. I mean, that's who we're dealing with today and Madison no different. So I think ideally. Like to have uh, at a minimum of thirty-two officers. So that means that's two more than the three I have to replace. Barring no other retirement. So once again, as I said, it's very difficult to line people up. Uh, for the academy or to get them to follow through and show that interest and get past the battery of tests we provide. Um, to get the right candidate. We do have a, a female candidate right now who is. In the academy. It's going to be followed by a second female candidate and it's going to be followed by a male candidate.
Thanks, Joe. And I know you've, you've been pretty good about asking every year, so we appreciate that.
I do that. I just want to be the broken record. I try to predicate it on need and explain it out. Most of the people I've dealt with, I've enjoyed a very good respectful relationship. And I'm very, very proud of that. I don't ever, ever want to compromise with the boards.
Jack, I appreciate you laying the groundwork for um. The, 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 the upcoming budget. Um, I think. You know, what I'm, I'm really interested in is, is responding to um, the community with what. What can we do to support you today? Um, so that we're not waiting until next July to implement measures. Um, I don't think that, that people want to hear what we're going to do next July per se. They want to hear what we're going to do tomorrow. And what can this board do to support the commission and, and your team?
If I may, just one comment to follow up on Scott. Uh, Scott, it's, it was good to hear you say to the department, the commission and the public that you recognize the chief has made. The staffing requests for a number of years. And, and perhaps being an optimist, not, not a pessimist. If we had, and I've seen and participated in how the budget request is put together from our offices. And Peggy was part of the commission when some of this was done. And the chief has done an excellent job of justifying what we need. And unfortunately, many times it comes back with, you guys are doing such a terribly good job with the number that you have. Why don't you just keep that moving forward? Well. That's called, that's half an answer. And in relation to half an answer, if we had been a bit more proactive in previous years. We wouldn't be in the situation we would be, we are now. We would have an adequate staffing number. And speaking to what the chief has mentioned. There is, there's no big deal anymore about becoming a cop. There's no reason why young men go in the service and serve our country and then come out and say, I'd like to continue to serve my community. I want to be a cop. With all the things that have been said negatively, the impact on them, the financial impact on officers. It's not high on the list of people anymore. So in order to get the proper candidates, it takes a lot of time. And just dropping back to that again, Scott. These requests are current and they're real. And, and I think looking at the bottom of the screen, there are forty-two people out there who are listening to this. That's the largest number of participants either in person in the police uh, commission. In any of our meetings, and I've been doing this for almost fourteen years. I've never seen forty-two people show up for a meeting before. So there is a very real concern from the public. And I hope when the numbers are presented, you guys do the right thing. Thank you.
Yes, appreciate the confidence. Oh. Am I okay to speak? Okay. Tom, thank you. Um, Bruce, to, to answer your question. All you folks that elected office, you're our state's people. In the town, you all know a unbelievable amount of people in town, whether it be from your own political organizations, from business organizations, the chamber. PTO is huge, all that, uh, the schools. It's, you, you folks are the ones that get the word out. Explain to people because most of what I've found in my policing world is the clarification of misinformation. Now, when I came to you folks, I, I say, gee, Jack, what, what prepared you for being the chief of police in Madison? I can go on about degrees. I can go on about training. Policing and years of experience, but you know what? It was always when I was my town selectman and shoot me now, Board of Ed and Board of, and Board of Finance and that, what I. And my younger life, that's what I brought to the table when I came here. And I understand it. So. We just get, we just got through, we're over the hump, so to speak. I believe we are with COVID, but there's a lot of concerns when COVID hit. What would our collection rates be? Where would people be? Well, we have the finances to do what we do. And because of that background I just explained to you, and I told you the respect I have with the various boards, I, I'm, I want to be that team player. So when you folks say to me, hey, Jack. Can we go without it one more year if we do this or that? I'm very cognizant of that. I know that sometimes. There are some federal funds that don't come through, some state funds that don't come through. I'm very, very cognizant of the fact that you folks enjoyed a one point two plus million pilot fund in lieu. From, from the uh, state of Connecticut for Hammond asset, which draws a lot of our resources and that's been doing a lot to almost nothing. Am I correct in that statement? Pretty much so. So. I'm cognizant of that and, and. It's, I just worked, learned to work within with the other agencies in the town, the boards and. At this point, I think in lieu what's happening in, in crime, juvenile justice across this state and other places. I think the time is now that we can no longer pass on it, that we're going to have to move it up. And there's no one group or one, one committee or one party to blame. It's just the time. We're trying to, we're trying to minimize the expense, the taxpayers of this town. We have both a, a very, very full. Senior population in this town are living on fixed incomes. And every time we go up on something, they can't, they, they cut out cable TV or eating hot dogs at their home trying to live independent. I'm cognizant of that. So what I do is I try to do, come in and ask you folks what I really need. So I guess at this fall. And they echo what Tom said, I'm going to say what I really need. I need the additional police officers.
In the end, it's about public safety, right, Jack? I mean, that's what we're talking about here.
I'm not sure where it's going to end. I don't, I, I, I was on the uh, Police Combat Transparency today. We're voting on for legislation, some of the changes in the laws. Um, I, I had my own opinions on juvenile justice in the, in the state and some of the other programs. Um, we're in a lot of trouble. You know, we have, there isn't, uh, families used to, when the mom and dad checked out, the grandparents raised the kids. That's, that doesn't exist anymore. Now the kids live in three to five apartment, average age fifteen. And they can't, the social services cannot keep up with them. They're overwhelmed. Probation is overwhelmed. All the, all the state agencies are overwhelmed. People say simplistically, somebody wrote, well, why can't we have them, you know, help? It's not that easy. No matter what you read, no matter, the judge has, only knows how many beds there are. You can't just send them out. If you want, if they're a danger, we need to incarcerate them. We don't have the ability right now. It's very limited. You know, I, I open my, uh, my large mouth at times and say, you know, instead of building some magnificent stadium. Why don't we build the juvenile justice east and west, make it like a campus and let's rehabilitate and educate because you never ever can put kids. In incarceration with adults. That's the wrong thing to do. So I, I've spoken enough on this. Peggy, I'll, I'll shut down now. Some of these folks that showed up, Marietta, you're smiling.
I, I guess I'd like to, uh, you know, continue to open up to other board member questions or comments. Any, anymore?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Sarah, and I have a question for the chief. Um. Just getting back to the car theft issue. Uh, because I know that's been something that the board is, has heard a lot about from various residents. Um, and I was just curious, have you been able to determine if there are certain neighborhoods or areas of the town? Where um, these. Where this is happening? Is it concentrated in certain areas? And I, putting aside Fourth of July, because I think that's a little bit of a. Uh, you know, anomaly, but generally speaking, since this period of time has, has happened.
There, uh, you, you try to predict based on some of the trends, but it doesn't work out that way. They, depends whether the group is coming from. If they're coming along the ninety-five border, they may jump out and go south. If they're coming from far the north, from Waterbury, they'll come down from six ninety-one. London, obviously from the east, Middletown, south Hartford, south. So it's, it's, we really can't predict it. We've had officers engaged in before it even stole a vehicle, but we stopped to pursue. Um. Neil, you could talk a little bit more because we have, we, one that we have been very successful was on a high success rate and. One locating the parties involved. And we've been very fortunate, although now they're getting more sophisticated, trying their best not to leave any uh, DNA or other. Neil?
So the, the question about the areas, um, obviously the water routes. Years ago, it, Neck Road was a huge target. Um, they've seen the passed on from Neck Road. We haven't had any down in that area. Um, the Rolling Meadow area off of uh, seventy-nine has been targeted. As well as the side roads off of Muggertown Road. Um, those are primarily the most active areas we've seen this year. Um, but uh, down by the water i- i- is frequent and it, it, it comes down to, you know, um. They don't know the area. They come down, they get off the highway. They find a route. They tried to go to the affluent neighborhoods. And the houses where they're congested so they can hit the most um, driveways that they can in a short period of time and. Be uh, gone before they're detected.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Because I, I think, you know, we tend to talk a lot about below ninety-five. And I think, you know, those of us that live up in, in north country here. Um, you know, have a, a, you know, uh, always the same concern and want to make sure that we're feeling safe and protected as well as. Is that, is that a concern, Lieutenant?
Um, that area is, obviously that area is constantly patrolled. I mean, the chief doesn't want to get into staffing numbers. Um, but that area is patrolled and uh, we've seen a major downturn in this type of activity up north. Uh, I mean, recently there was a car gone through on Jasper, but they. In the last two years, they've primarily focused down to southern Madison. I, I live up north, so trust me, I make sure it's covered.
Neil, add to that some of the recovery of the uh, out of state of the cars, uh, New York area and then.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, we've had cars that have ended up in New York. Um, these gentlemen, these kids, I'm going to say it, they're kids. They know, no jurisdictional boundary. They will take these cars, they will joyride. And they will go all over up in the Ry New York area. We've had them recover. Um, you know, and we've recovered them from out, out of state. Um, we just recovered, you know, one the other day from uh. You know, it was in state in Waterbury, but they use these vehicles until they feel they're getting hot. And they just go out and get new ones. So, you know, you, you can't predict it. There's no jurisdictional boundaries. They don't care and our hands are tied. When it, when it comes to the reforms and, you know, uh, I ran the detective bureau for the last fourteen years. I can't tell you countless times that we've submitted arrest warrants. And they're denied because by the time you get a DNA uh, result. They are now eighteen years old and since they committed the crime when they're juvenile, juvenile court does not want to entertain those cases.
Thank you, Neil.
Yeah.
Any other questions uh, from police commissioners or Board of Selectman members? No comments?
I'd just say for the people on, if we can just do a quick summary of. You know, what we need to do, what we're asking for, when do you vote on the budget so that the people listening know? Because a lot of these people have been following and have been asking that same question. Um, so just to like, just quickly summarize the bullet points of what we've spoken about today, I think would be helpful for the people on.
Neil, you're waving your finger there.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I want to add something. Um, it. I've been with this agency for twenty-one years. Okay? Twenty-one years, this town is dramatically changed. Okay? The needs of this town have dramatically changed. And I can tell you that on shifts that we are running, we are still running with the same amount of people that I ran with twenty-one years ago when I first started. The times have changed.
That, that, that does put it in perspective. Okay, but uh. Christine has a legitimate question, but you know, I, I certainly. Know we all have a general sense of the budget process, but it would be helpful. Uh, certainly, we have a plan to discuss uh. Some of the resource request options coming up in October, Police Commission meeting as.
Police Commission meeting is kind of the, the start of it. But then, you know, obviously once we are reaching agreement on that, then we'll move into the, you know, the regular budget calendar. And, and we know that starts, you know, close to the end of the year or right after the first of the year.
So the, um, uh, the town submits, so each of the departments will be submitting their budgets in early December, I think it is. And then, um, there's an overall final budget request that's, that's then submitted to the board of selectmen. Um, and then the board of selectmen reviews it and takes action on that in, um, I want to say February. And then it goes to the board of finance and there's joint workshops that both the board of finance and board of selectmen have to review the budget in, in January. So that the board of finance is kind of pulled into the process earlier. Um, so that by the time the board of finance takes action on the budget, they've already had a lot of the operating, operational conversations and kind of understand the background to the budget. So, um, I know that isn't, you know, so then it gets voted on and then it ultimately goes to the public. Um, there's opportunities for the public to weigh in prior to going to referendum in May. And then the fiscal year for the town begins July 1st. So I know a lot of people are saying, well, how is that going to help me now? Um, you know, it's, you know, even if we could wave a magic wand and come up with money to hire more officers. I think that, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a long process and it's not so easy to do right now. So I think, um, you know, um, this is a long-term thing, making a further investment in the department. And I'm, and the police commission and, and the police department will come up with what they think is the right staffing levels for the department going forward. Um, I think in, in terms of the short-term issues, um, you know, the chief drum spoke about and sort of add about a lot of the tactical things that they're trying to do. And, and also some were, you know, low cost, low hanging fruit types of investments that the town can make in terms of signage. Um, and looking at other strategies. I know the, uh, police department is also looking at using cameras more effectively. Some of that could go through the budget process and some of that might be able to be funded outside of the budget process. So those could be maybe some shorter term things that could be prioritized. So that, that's kind of, um, my takeaway from the conversation and, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief. And, and, uh, and if, if that's kind of the timeline we're talking about.
Once it comes out of committee and it goes, it's, you folks have the various meetings where it goes to referendum, that's generally anywhere between the sometime in May into June.
So I, I think it's important that we recognize that the sand is shifting underneath our feet. That, uh, the assumptions that we've worked with in the past are, are really no longer, um, true. I, I would be reluctant to say we should let this run through the normal budget, um, cycle because that's July of next year. I, I, you guys are working on, um, solutions. And, uh, I, I would encourage you to bring, um, these, these solutions to us as quickly as possible. And let us work with the board of finance to figure out how to get these changes implemented sooner rather than later.
Real quick question, Bruce, um, just because I'm not familiar in terms of special funds for something like this. So if the chief came to you or, you know, with the, um, board of police commission and said, we need X amount of dollars to hire, um, you know, two officers, two extra officers to help with the extra patrols by this state. Is that something that the board of finance would be willing to look at?
So I, I think that, uh, reasonable people will be reasonable. So if the, um, plan that the commission and, and, um, the leadership of the police department come up with is, is a reasonable plan that, that we would hear it as that and, um, make it a recommendation to the board of finance that we spend this as a special appropriation. Ultimately, it's up to the board of finance to figure out where that money comes from. Most likely it would come out of the undesignated fund balance. But doing so, to be completely transparent, um, would be us signaling our, um, agreement to incorporate this into the operating budget for the following year, right? We can do a special appropriation once.
Right.
But when we take on a recurring expense like that, we're committing to, to keeping with that moving forward. So.
And I, and I think the process, as Bruce was saying, would be, um, and we recently did a special appropriation for the police department. That was out of the budget cycle about the reorganization plan that the police commission had, um, endorsed. And so, um, you know, there is precedent where we try to take action and provide support as, as much as we can, when it makes sense. And, you know, if there were some, uh, thinking about trying to move forward with some of these, uh, staffing needs outside of the cycle. I know we tend to try not to do that, but it would have to be, um, upon recommendation by the police commission. Um, and then it would go through our board and then it would go through board of finance. We have a very, um, you know, we have resources available in our 80-day fund, um, to cover things like this. But to Bruce's point, now you're kind of committing because once you hire a person, you don't want to just then the next year you vote down the budget and you can't just get rid of them, right? So you're making a commitment, um, uh, to future budgets. I will point out the other thing that is unique about the police department budget is the extraordinary amount of overtime that we incur because of the staffing situation. So, um, you know, it's, they really do, uh, incur a lot of overtime. And we have a very large overtime in that budget. So part of it is trying to weigh, well, maybe, you know, rather than overtime, maybe we should be covering this through a, a full-time replacement. So it's not always just a, an addition. It, it might be an offset as well, um, in terms of how we look at the overall staffing model for the department. But that's all things I think that, um, the chief would work with the police commission on and figure out what the right recommendation would be to, uh, our board and to the board of finance.
Right. I mean, I think we're hearing loud and clear from the community that there is desire. We're hearing loud and clear from the commissioners and from the chief that, um, that there's need to take action. So I think we receive any plan that you put forward in that spirit.
What I'd like to do is I'm waiting to see October 1st to see what, where we're going to go with some of the accountability transparency act. And if we're going to be compelled, example, what if I have to hire two social workers? Or somehow get two social workers on staff and, and add that to the police budget. I mean, I, I want to, I want to see where it has the law progressed. If they pass the laws, what they do is they put, they move the sunset on. You know, the, when they would actually be put into process because of they realize that it's a harder, it's going to be a greater task than just throwing a switch. And most certainly hiring police officers is not just throwing a switch. It's a long road to get them there. Unless you hire a lateral transfer. Even then, we try to, uh, pick the best we can. There was a lot of departments looking for them also. So those are going to be some of the challenges. I will have that in a comprehensive package. With the documentation as we walk through the fall, you know, Stacy now is going to be asking for us shortly, there's be submitting some of the documents to her. Um, and of course, uh, the first, our first luck will be asking shortly for us to start submitting our budgets. Here's where they go in the first week of December. That few folks might recall, and then we work our way to the presentations of January. So I'm going to be probably far reaching for what I think we're going to need. Some of that may be able to put on hold. Most certainly the, uh, men and women in blue, we're probably going to have to definitely ask for the additional bodies.
If how does, you made, you mentioned the social work piece, but how does that integrate? Um, and I, I'm probably assuming that you probably already had conversations with the director of Madison Youth and Family Services. How does that integrate, uh? Well, service standpoint.
If, if you go back to, um, if you look at when, uh, President Obama, 21st century policing and how progressive that the towns and cities by way of states, uh, embracing, uh, and the study showed that, um, let's just say for a hundred calls for service involving a psychotic episode, probably 20 something percent involved the, a police officer. We, we go to all of them right now, but you have to understand that, um, sometimes particularly when somebody is having some sort of breakdown. The sight of the uniform, the person with a gun on the hip does not add to that. Some of these could be handled better by somebody trained, although our offices are trained in CIT, um, critical incident management. Sometimes it's better having the ability of the social worker and that's where this law kind of found its way. They're saying that perhaps we should have social workers embedded with the police, not putting them at risk. And there's a lot of models out there. Some models in smaller communities are they hired to, they're, they're basically, uh, it's not a uniform per se, it's plain clothes. They're equipped with a radio, they have no weapons and essentially, and a good example, we have somebody that walks maybe in, um, from, uh, the, uh, Grove School and they're having an episode and we get to them, it could be by downtown, it could be by the railroad tracks. So we learn to, um, de-escalate it by training through CIT and, um, where years ago we'd put them in an ambulance and sent it to a major hospital with behavior suite. Now we de-escalate and we return them home and we, we try to do the follow-up. The social working component is the follow-up. And that works a good junk, that will work in conjunction with the school, school resources, school social worker, psychologists and our own youth and family services. So it's going to be somewhat of a hybrid. Yeah. Excuse, excuse me. I, I, I don't want to prolong the evening discussion, but, uh, I, I think, uh, at least in our thinking is we should deal with some of the, uh, resource needs to meet key services right now. These are basic services in terms of, of crime or speeding. We should deal with what, what are, what do we need to meet those basic expectations of the community? I think the chief then has raised what is also in the pipeline. If there's a new dimension, including, uh, social worker, mental health workers that is mandated. Those might be areas that certainly legally we're going to have to comply with. But there might be some opportunities depending on the, the frequency for us to partner with another community, to partner with a, with a university to see how we might meet that, that mean they add these, what will essentially be new services, uh, perhaps needed services. But really separate, you know, our resource requests going to the board of select and the board of finance saying, these are the basic services that we need to add to bring us up to a certain level of community safety and expectations. Also the state is adding, you know, certain requirements that we think, you know, will have a positive effect at some point, but it's not going to deal, those new services are not going to meet in, you know, community expectations in February, March or next summer. So I think the two important areas, obviously there are dollars, you know, in both, uh, areas. But I, I think our focus with the police commission where we can, I think, uh, analyze the immediate needs earlier, quicker and, and with significant credibility that the chief is absolutely, you know, uh, being able to look kind of over the horizon with some of these mental health needs and requests that are coming from the state. We're going to be need to deal with that because if it's, if it's mandated, but let's not wrap them together if, if, if we, if we, unless we really need to. And that, that, but because the timing may not, uh, you know, match up, you know, we have some urgent needs now. The other mandated implementation may be at a later date. We don't know. And I mean, that's, that's my thought without, you know, sitting down with the, the commission members and really with the chief and his leadership team, you know, and sorting through some of these issues in a, in a more in-depth way.
Well, I think a lot more to talk about, obviously. And, uh, and I know you guys will be focusing on this in October, it sounds like about, um, you know, staffing and, and kind of, uh, more detailed recommendations. I, I think with that, if the, if the board members, it's been an hour now, so maybe we can open up for public comment. Cause I know we have a lot of people, uh, um, here tonight, um, that just want to make statements. And I think that typically just for the public's awareness, public comment is usually just, um, the board's listening to your comment. Um, and it's not usually an interactive type of, um, uh, session because otherwise we would be here probably for a long time. But I think what we do try to do is note, uh, questions and themes and try to address those, um, with follow-up. So, um, uh, and hopefully, you know, you've had the opportunity now to hear the conversation and, um, and understand the direction that, uh, both boards seem to want to be going in. So, um, is everybody good with, we go to a public comment now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Okay. Um, so I know Lauren had to leave and so now we have Danielle who stepped in, uh, as our moderator or pan, for the panel. And so, um, with that, um, Danielle, I think, um, if you had, you raise your hand. And then Danielle will elevate you up to the panel and then you can, um, state your name and address and, um, make your statement.
Okay. So first we have Jim. I will allow him to talk.
Okay. And I, I will just want to say too, please to keep for interest of time, um, you know, just to keep your comments to a minute or two at the most, um, with that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is Jim Ferenczi. I live on Seaview. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, um, the police commissioners and Chief Drum and his colleagues for everything they're doing to keep us safe. That, that's a big job. I've said that before at the police, uh, commissioners meeting. Uh, but it is, it's something that we know is important to you guys and it's important to us. By way of background for people that have not been part of these discussions dating back to the spring. This is a big group that's on this call and, and, and the 42 people, I'm glad Tom Cartlidge asked how many people were on there or told us how many people were on there. That's a subset of the hundreds of people that we've spoken to about these issues. Speaking for myself and my family, we do not feel safe at our own home in Madison. And that's a, that's a sad thing to say. I'm not safe driving out of my driveway at 5:00 AM, uh, to go to the airport. When I run into two cars, you know, scrounging around our neighborhood trying to score something. I'm not, I don't feel safe sleeping out in my backyard with my daughter like I do every year. My wife doesn't feel safe walking her dog at three o'clock in the morning. So it's not a very good place for any of us to be. I've spoken at the previous board of selectmen meeting. I've sent emails to you all. We've had, uh, very constructive discussions. We've also, a group of us have had discussions dating back to July with the board of police commissioners and chief drum. But so far not a lot's happened and that's what's frustrating. I think the most recent activity that we've seen over the past two weeks along the shoreline, where there have been home incursions and car thefts needs to serve as a wake-up call. Bruce Wilson talked about taking action now. That's exactly the right attitude. Uh, this is, this is something that is, as I said before, complex. It's multi-dimensional. It's going to take time to find solutions, but things have to be done now because of the safety risk. And again, I view this car theft issue as not being a property issue, not being a vehicle issue. It's fundamentally a safety issue. I think that the board of selectmen, the board of police commissioners, importantly, the board of finance and the police department have to jointly own the problem and own the solution and drive toward a solution. And that driving starts from the top down, uh, from the board of selectmen. So I think that in my view, I'll sum up, time is of the essence. The time for definitive action is now. And as I've said before, I think the single biggest thing that I would ask that this group consider and find a way to do is to, in the short term, not the long term, not the medium term, increase the police presence in wherever the vulnerable neighborhoods are during the critical hours. And I appreciate the, the fact that patrols appear apparently have been stepped up from three o'clock to seven. But I say, what about midnight to three o'clock? So again, whatever the vulnerable hours are, increase the presence. And if that means more dollars being allocated on a special basis to make that happen. And I know it's subject to finding the right people to do it. I would ask that this group make it happen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Uh, any other public comment?
Yes. Next we have Joan Walker.
I want to thank everyone there, um, for, uh, bringing us together to have this discussion. I think the progress that's being made, um, for the school plan is wonderful. I also want to clarify, I think that the impression was given in the last 20 years that there hasn't been additions to the police staff. And as a former member of the board of selectmen, I think that that's not quite accurate. I think we have been adding to staff, whether or not it's sufficient enough. I think I agree with Chief Drum. We need to add more at this point in time. And I think that the board of finance really needs to listen when chief comes to them and, and, and make sure that they get the dollars that they need. I know when I was on the board of selectmen. I know when I was on the Board of Selectmen, uh, chief's budget was passed unanimously every time. Um, there may have been questions during budget workshops, but we moved forward with it. I do believe that we need to ensure that the Board of Finance um takes those recommendations to heart and does the ads to the budget that is requested and not cut. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and a reminder to state your address as well, your name and address when you speak. Any other hands raised?
Yes, next we have Chris.
Hi there, this is Chris Tier, I live at Four Grove. Um, I just want to thank you for all your time. I want to thank Captain Harkins in particular for having called me recently uh to give me an idea of the specific steps that were being taken. I shared that with some in our community uh who have been concerned for months now. Um, and I would just echo what's already been said along the lines of, please get Chief Drum whatever Chief Drum believes he needs as soon as possible. Special appropriation, next year's budget cycle, um, we appreciate your time, we appreciate your action even more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, next, any more comment?
I see one more and it is Judy, so I'll allow her to talk.
I think you're muted, Judy. Do you want to unmute? Danielle, can you unmute her?
Um, I asked her to unmute, I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay. Are you able to unmute her, though? Uh, is the.
I, yeah, I don't think I can unmute her unless she approves it, yes.
Okay, um, so maybe, uh, why don't we, is there anybody else? And we could always go back to Judy if she.
That is it, no one else has their hands raised.
No other public comment, okay? All right, Judy, apologize, um, but you what you can do if you are having issues with your computer is you can submit an email. Um, and you can send it to uh uh the Board of Selectmen, B O S at Madison C T dot org. And I encourage anybody else on this call, if they didn't want to speak up tonight, you can certainly send an email to all board members um with your comments um in support or suggestions or whatever that you heard tonight. Um, so I think then with that, um, if everybody is good, I think we can adjourn the meeting. I just want to say thank you for the Police Commissioners and to our MPD representatives here for a very health healthy dialogue. And I look forward to continuing the conversation um so that we can make some progress here, so, all right? And with that, I guess, um, all in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody, thank you. Everybody.